There wasn't anything, but I'm smelling.
No, she's not.
I'm going.
We had a personnel executive session. We had an executive session for personnel with the chair of the personnel committee?
Yes, making a motion that we terminate employment of Dakota Tadaro effective immediately.
A second.
You can hear.
We can't hear you.
They can't hear you. You need to speak up a little more.
Oh, we're making a motion to just terminate employment of Dakota Tadaro immediately due to work violation.
May I have a second?
I say no.
Any discussion by council members? Any discussion from the public?
What departmental work is work violation?
Thank you.
What?
It's he.
Oh. What department?
Y'all are?
Public, the public department.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
And also, to make our record complete, we need to announce that there was an effect, an executive session held on July 24th, 2025, to discuss legal issues related to the DEP violations that have been filed against the borough. So, legal issues were discussed. No affirmative action needs to be taken at this point.
Can you speak yet?
We had an executive session, July 24th, 2025, to discuss DEP issues related, to discuss the legal issues and ramifications of the DEP citations we received down in the court. And no official action needs to be taken this evening. But we're required under law to tell you that.
An engineer's report? Would anybody care to read the engineer's report?
I didn't get one.
It's not a basket?
No, I think it's a burrito. Could be a candy daily. Two words. I'll get one later.
I'll read it.
Okay. Meeting time is at 6:00 PM, 11:06:25. The location municipal voting.
Could you speak up a little?
Sure. If all is an update, and status for the various projects.
Are we seriously gonna read, read it? I mean, word for word?
No, just something.
Should be enough, sure enough.
Here, I'll give you a quick summary. Honeytine County Housing Authority, they're doing the Chesapeake Terrace retaining wall. I've been following the emails on this. There are some suggestions that were made by the engineer. The engineer for the housing authority is making changes to the plans and will report back. So that is not in a position for council to take any action. The Elyse subdivision plan, I don't know if that was reviewed.
It'll be discussed tonight.
It'll be reviewed by council later in this agenda. We've been working our way through it. It was our first formal saldo subdivision request, so we'll get reported on that fully. Bricktown Unity Trail, the, was not successful in the grant. You could, council can consider the next wave of applications, which opened on July 14th, and applications are due by September 5th of 2025. Given Park grant application, that was submitted. The total project amount is 124,755. Our recent application for the self-storage building was not successful, and council was probably gonna look for other options to fund that, that matter. Lower Park Alley, Hill Valley, Creek Rogers Newman Park, we're beginning to, Keller Engineers is asking that we begin to look at the issue of right-of-way acquisition to ship the alley. There were issues discussed before about the failing retaining wall, the street, and the pedestrian bridge. Stormwater management ordinance, I don't know where we stand on that. It's been kinda languishing, so we...
There's been no action, and there needs to be action. That's been languishing for two years maybe, or at least a year. I don't wanna exaggerate. And I understood that Taylor was gonna coordinate a meeting with a group of people, some of who volunteered. I can't recall who they were.
I don't remember who was on that committee.
I probably haven't been last month's.
It's, it's a lot of technical language. It just needs to be air, here, George is on it, Taylor, and myself. So maybe there could be actually gonna be a meeting scheduled to get that moving. It's a lot of technical language, so council just needs to make sure that our professionals have done a good job and address any questions that we have. The Honeytine County Act of Transportation Plan was adopted on May 1st of 2024. There may be further development and consideration by, that our committee, the Borough Parks Committee, may wish to tie into that overall county plan. And then the Juniada River Levy, the DEP noted a number of recommendations for safety for the levee system. Keller Engineers is working with Rodney Fleck to locate the drainage system and include that in the GIS system. So, that'll be a work in progress. There's something specific tonight that you need to do there.
Thank you.
Stand agenda. Any discussion?
I just have, just had a question on the list of bills. I thought, did I, I thought I understood correctly that when we were spending over $500, the project had to come here. Did I understand correctly? Okay, if you go to page two of the list of bills.
The register.
The check register, yeah, the check register dated 7/14/25. There's a woodland, it's right about the, I don't know, almost the middle of the page. There's a woodland equipment and supply company. And it says 100 ton of 2A stone, $1,833.92. I just don't know what that's for, and I don't remember approving it here, but maybe I just don't know what it's for. And we did approve it.
We agree here.
I've been first down for normal water leaks and stuff.
I'm sorry?
That'd be for stone, that we get to do the water leaks and anything we need stone for, that's what that'll afford.
Okay, did Taylor tell you that needs to come for our full wind advance? Anytime it's over.
It was no, it was no, I apologize.
No worries, no worries. Okay, so that answers that. And then, you probably noticed there are two payments on here to RBA professional, and it's for the police monthly retainer agreement. And I inquired why there were two in one month, and Tristan already explained that it was July, and now they wanna bill ahead, so it's August. So, at least that's what my understanding was. So that's a resolution of that. I did have one question on the police report, and this is true because I think I don't understand. And that is, now I have the new, I have the new one too, but it doesn't matter which one. I'm trying to understand, oh, was this, was this type of call things what got corrected, Tim?
The code word was?
Yes, 'cause one of my question was why there were zeros in there, and you got it corrected. Okay. The other question I had is, I don't know how this happens, but maybe it's from one year to the next, but I noticed in our financial reports that we show a collection of $7,163.37 as year-to-date revenue. You only show $6,668.47. So, there's almost a $500 difference. It's better for what came in than what you have on your report. But what I was thinking is, I mean, I don't know if that's the rollover from December to January of monies coming in, like, I don't know.
I want to check.
I just thought maybe you would wanna check on it. That's all. Since their numbers better.
Good catch.
Anybody else?
My numbers weren't, I missed the numbers by a day. Sorry to...
So that's why it wasn't on?
Sorry to make you a report count, and I missed them due first morning.
No, no worries. Thank you for the update.
Anybody else in the audience have any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We already had the discussion. We're gonna ask from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Old business, the logo.
Okay, so you'll see this when we get to the planning commission report, but it's in your packet. This is what, and thank you again Regina, very much for taking the original logo and converting it to blue and gold, which is what a lot of the people in the community requested. And I got Taylor to take the thumb drive that you made, that you converted colors and printed out, and it is a nice blue and gold. So, the only thing I wanted to say to you is, you know, it's not, this goes back to Borough Council now, just so you know that. And that'll be in the planning commission report. And the reason it goes back to Borough Council is because now Borough Council's gonna have to decide what it is we want to do with this, now that we have the color that we want. Does the color look okay with everybody, I guess is the big question. Are we all comfortable that the office can now print out the proper color? Okay. I just wanted to be sure of that. So that's, when I say it goes back to council, that's just for you to determine, you know, when we get new letterhead, if we ever do that, do we wanna put it on the letterhead? When we get new business cards, if we ever do that, do we wanna put on the business card? If we ever, like, this, everything that we do with it costs money is the bottom line of it. So, that's just what we have to keep in mind.
Could we make a, I don't know, maybe this, don't wanna sound premature, but, because wouldn't there be a way we could make a motion to adopt the package that they put together? Because we voted it, we can make it our own, and then we can pick and choose what we want.
Oh, and then Regina, I spoke with Regina, and I, I indicated that that would be up to Borough Council to reach out to her to talk about taking the entire package and converting all of it to the logo. She did this out of courtesy. You know, so...
Registering for future, if we wanted to say like, we're gonna adopt Penn State's preliminary ideas, whatever that's in the office, and then we can alter it to our, to our meetings, I guess.
With the colors.
Right.
Yes, the colors, it's already the altering, because the rest of it I think we like.
That's what I mean, it's like, could we say, okay, we really like what Penn State did, and get that out there, so Penn State knows we appreciate everything? Because I feel like for much of it's been kinda left out there.
Yeah, so, and Ilona knows that we're working on it because she sent a thumb drive, she dropped off a thumb drive, so she knew we were going to be making change. But I'm okay with that, but that's a Borough Council decision.
I feel like it'd be really good, positive something for the community.
I don't know if you're making a motion, Chair, I'm not clear if he's making a motion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna...
I don't...
If you wanna make that motion potentially, set the logo and then determine at a later date how you're gonna use it specifically, you can do that.
Alright, so it's no one else. Would I like to make a motion to adopt the design package that the Penn State extension gave to?
With our public.
With, with any other changes and any uses in the future.
Any discussion by council members?
Good, how are you?
Any discussion from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Water Street to 155.
That's still ongoing.
Have you guys had a meeting to talk about it or get input from them?
I talked to, it's her thing to read, I can't remember his last name.
Right.
Right now, and there's like seven steps yet to go through.
Oh.
So it's gonna be ongoing.
These are Penn Doc representatives, so it's, he coordinates getting, doing the work they need to do to tell us they're okay with it.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's a Penn Doc street, so, yep.
DEP complaint update?
Well, I'll say what I know in the absence of Taylor, or unless you want to, Larry, but it's up to you.
I think, go ahead.
Yeah, so the thing that we came to learn is that, okay, so we know there's two DEP complaints. My understanding at the most recent discussion was that the complaint regarding the Riverwalk Trail is looking as though it will be closed. I didn't get word whether it was formally closed. Did you, Larry?
No, we met on, when we discussed it the last time, we were awaiting that determination, but I have not been told that we got it.
Okay, then the complaint on the sewage issue relative to campers utilizing the primitive campsite for more than it was intended, we researched documents, we thought we understood that CDBG funds were all that was used for the primitive campsite aspect. And then there were other contributors to the boat launch itself and the parking lot. It turns out there were no CDBG funds used. That was later found, and that instead, it was the Chesapeake Bay Gateways Network funded half of it, of the entire project of 240-some thousand dollars, and DCNR funded the other half of it. So, that's not really good news from the perspective of how easy will it be to remove the primitive camping spot? Should that be the option that we look to move forward on? So that's kind of the bad news. The short-term solution is that, according to the gentleman who is the sewage enforcement officer, we have had to, and that was part of that meeting we had a couple, a week or two ago, we have to leave the porta potty at the park following the completion of the summer camp for the children, because there has to be a short-term solution for the people who are camping there, whether they're primitive camping or they're staying long-term. That's all I can tell you about that. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I think Cheryl accurately reported. It leads into DE, old business, about what the long-term solution is for primitive camping. The, my understanding from the SEO was this is, the DEP said that the porta jones could be a temporary solution, but they can't be a long-term solution, and in order to meet with DEP requirements. Even though, when you look at federal-state law, primitive camping means you go out in the deep wilderness, you poop on the ground, you bury it, and then you leave. It's not really kind of a nice thing for Mountain Union's municipal park for people to be using, doing number two, and then burying it down there, so it doesn't really fit. But at the time, none of this, I think, was specifically told to us. It was just saying if people could stay there overnight and then leave. It's meant to be a one-night thing, and not supposed to stay there, all the long-term issues we have. It really wasn't intended to be, that doesn't even fit primitive camping. So the long-term decision for the borough is, is this, if you wanna keep the primitive camping sites, we gotta figure out if the sewage needs to build bathrooms down there will be extremely expensive. We would have issues with funding. And then the question always is, who takes care of them and keeps them up and running? So, council on a longer-term basis needs to decide whether they wanna try to keep these two or three spots, or whether they want to basically beg the federal and state officials to say, we wanna just not use them as primitive camping sites. They could be used for picnic sites or whatever. And so that's kinda where we are on a longer-term basis. It ties in with, like, the issues of rules and how long you can stay and appropriate behavior. Those are all still being discussed, and we'll formulate specific rules that may well be incorporated into an ordinance. But just so everyone separates them, the sewage needs issue is a little bit different than people staying there, and how long can you stay, and the rules that we're gonna expect them as a community to follow. We have to balance the needs of our residents with people who wanna stay there three weeks. I don't think that the park was intended for that purpose, so council is working toward that solution. And also, then we're gonna have to add on to the council's list, what are we gonna do about these three primitive camping sites? And they're really, they're slabs of concrete with, I think, a fire pit.
And a picnic table.
And a picnic table, so, okay, we're gonna sleep on the slab of concrete. And it seems to me if you just say, you're no overnight camping as a lot of the, this point, if that's the decision, what loss of funds are there? Because all the improvements that were made, you can still use the fire pit, you can still use the picnic table, the slab of concrete. So, that's kinda where we are. There was some discussion, and we will re-verify this for the community. I understood from Mr. Cantney's, our sewage enforcement officer, we can't do the porta jones like seasonally, because that would make sense. Most campers will be there. The theory is you could actually come in November, and if you're a primitive camper, you could stay there overnight. So the question is, are the porta potties not a long-term solution for this broader question of what we do about the bathrooms? Did I get that right, everybody? So that's kinda where we are.
Not really.
Any comment?
Yeah, I gotta comment on that. I had this whole thing, I'm on the agenda towards the end, but maybe you wanna move me up to where now? I don't know, but that's up to you. But you kinda got it right, and you kinda got it wrong. I got DEP's letters here. I just got approval today from DEP to put park benches in. I don't need any permits. I can put the park benches in any, any fashion that I choose to do that. They cleared me of that. The trail, we went through the trail from A to Z, and DEP gave me a letter stating that, you know, the trail, we did not violate any regulations, just putting stone down or whatever, and it fell within their regulations, and it's...
And that's the removal of the claim on the first one, so what you're saying has to be fixed into what we were told.
Okay, so, but the problem of it is, you got, you got the horse ahead of the cart, and you never left us finish as the trail committee, who went out and earned money to feed the people that helped and to do the trail or whatever. Our, our mission was to complete what we started, and it was never left happen that way.
Well, what would you have starts, what would you have completed that solves the long-term sewage issues?
We had, we had that in the, in the plan, where we was going to take some of the money we earned to get the porta potties put in to be able to take care of the people walking the trail, if they had a place to go to the bathroom. That was part of our plan, as the citizens of the community, the ones that worked, to put this into place. DEP has not a problem, and I got letters here, emails showing that porta jones can be used. They're used at the state throughout the summer months at the boat launches, or the same difference as what we have here. We got a boat launch here. Mountain and Borough is the biggest violator of the whole thing. Mountain and Borough rents a park down there with the pavilion that my hands helped build free, and a bunch of other workers helped build free in the community. Okay, they turn around and rent that out to have a party of 150, 200 people for a reunion, or 300. Where are they shitting piss? There ain't no bathrooms there. You don't have a porta potty. You're collecting money for it. So why don't we, in our plan, our plan was to put a porta potty down there that you could use for the park. The other thing was the people that was camping there had a porta potty to use, and we was gonna help pay for it. If you had a slight charge for the porta potty used for the people that wanted to camp there, or wanted to have a reunion there, that would help to pay for it. Where's the Parks Committee's monies at to do this? And what does the sewage, the SEO, what do they have to do with people walking the trail and taking a piss or whatever they're doing? I don't think that the sewage officer is intended to do that. They're for on-lot sewage. We're not asking for on-lot sewage there. Now, Mapleton Borough, we, I went and talked to them. We was going to adopt the Mapleton Borough's regulations, where they had three nights camping, which solved their problem. Their bathrooms they put in, I got the blueprints coming for them, very inexpensive. And there's no water in their bathrooms, the same as what's at the boat launch at Racetime Lake. They, they pump them out, you know, every year, they bring the truck in and pump them out. And there, it's not a bathroom that's gonna cost you a million dollars, and we have to worry about the water freezing, and all that stuff.
If, if in fact, the, the answer, if DEP is speaking from different sides of their, their mouth at this point, if, if the, the long-term solution to all the issues with the restroom are to have the porta jones, that can certainly be considered. Your assistance in helping to fund that and figure out how we pay for them is also appreciated. I think that the problem from our end institutionally is, we get called in with these complaints, and it's not that we don't trust what you do, it's just like, council doesn't know, or staff doesn't know. We just need it to be more of a team effort, so that we don't look as if we don't know what the hell's going on, and that's the problem.
Okay, Larry, but here's what it boiled down. When we, we turned around and we put the trail in, and we was gonna have a, a meeting to set the rules and regulations and whatever we needed to talk about, and then it got pushed, it went to the Parks Committee. And the Parks Committee meeting got canceled the day, five days before the meeting, because DEP was called. There was a citizen of the community, which is Jennifer Atherton, that was one that made a formal complaint. And there was a council member that made a formal complaint that was anonymous, okay? So, the council member that made the complaint that was anonymous voted for me to put the stone down on the trail. Okay, 100%. So, I don't understand how you can vote to do something and then turn around and file a complaint, and...
And that, that's, we can't speak to that. That wasn't done on behalf of council.
Anonymous, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, it's anonymous. We don't know who put it in, and they wouldn't tell us, and it was wiped out from the materials that we were supplying, so...
Well, anyway.
I will answer the question about, let me, excuse me, about the restrooms, and that is, we're not allowed to have any septic systems in our borough.
It's not a septic system.
Well, and our...
It's not a septic, they did it in Mapleton Borough, it's a holding tank.
Well, the porta jones is not a septic system, but if, if you were deciding to be, build bathrooms, it would have to be connected to public, our public systems. So, that, but that, that's the point Cheryl was making. And so I think what we're hearing is that we need to make a deter, we have to get information from DEP specifically, that if the porta jones are permissible, then council can make a decision to count, which is to proceed. Right? Is that accurate, council? I mean, I, I don't think we're in a position to make that determination today.
Dwight, I've, I've not seen your plan, so I don't know, I didn't...
No, you're not gonna see my plan, Cheryl, because I don't have a plan. I'm just going by what DEP turned around and, and wrote on this email stating that porta jones was fine because of their use along the river at many different sites, you know?
Oh, I think that here's where the confusion might be. The, the SEO complaint, or the complaint regarding that had to do with people camping overnight for numerous nights in a row, and where they're going to the bathroom. That was the DE, that was the complaint and the concern that the gentleman, the SEO brought forward to us. It wasn't about whether or not people can use that trail that we've put in. It was that we can't do overnight camping unless we have proper restroom facilities.
Well, how do you rent a place and have 150 people have a reunion there? And you, you collect money for that, okay? How, how do you do that? Where do they go to the bathroom when they're there?
They have a Johnny Court put in. Every family that lived down here that I know have a Johnny Court put in.
Yeah, I'd like to hear some background on that, just to clear up the, the whole septic tank. There was Act 13 funds granted about four or five years ago for, it's a holding tank. There's a separate, there's a difference in a septic and a holding tank. And the Act 13 funds went for it, and it's got about $15,000, and it was, it was never used, but it was a plan already presented. That's why that, that parking lot was created. There was that shale parking lot, that was actually for a holding tank to go in there for a future bathroom. That's why there's electric down there, and it's paid for electric to be put up, and then to pay for the dirt. And then I seen the letter, for whatever reason, it just gave $6,000 back, saying you could do it cheaper. That was how the, that's the letter wrote, you'd have to see that. But in that, that was never completed, but you just can't have a holding tank, and I think the idea was to pump it out. So it's not like a septic.
A holding tank has to be pumped out. There has to be warning alarms saying when it's at 75%, so there is a lot of...
There's no water.
Maintaining the, the, the holding tank. The question is then, that you're gonna have the holding tank, that means you're gonna have the bathroom facilities that aren't porta jones. So the question is, what direction do they wanna go? And then, I think, once they make that decision, then it's easy then to figure out what path they're gonna take. If you're gonna, if the holding tank only comes into play, they're gonna build restroom facilities. The question is, is the porta jone for overnight stays appropriate? And we were told by our SEO that it wasn't. I'm right about a few of my...
He said it was...
Yeah, we're talking about two different systems. You're talking about putting it in the ground. Racetime Lake, they use, it's a holding facility, but there's no water. So this tank, the people pissing in that tank is gonna fill a 500-gallon tank up three summers in a row. It's not gonna happen.
Well, however long it takes. The fact is, there are requirements that DEP has for those holding tanks, and whether you like it or not, they have to be met. The question is, do you want something more permanent, or do you want the temporary facilities where the porta potties can be dumped regularly? where the porta-potties can be dumped regularly? We were told that for overnight camping, it may seem, sound silly. You may be able to do it for the picnics and the walks and the daily visits to the park. We were told that you can't do it for the overnight stays. That's what we were told. If you're being told something different, then that's a conflict with our own agency. We need to find that out.
Well, you could correct, you told DEP, because I'm sure that Felicia will explain.
And that's why we pay the SEO to find that information out. He's our representative on sewage matters in the borough.
All right, Pat, let's move on for a couple more minutes. Resident?
If you don't mind, is it okay if I just clarify one, ask for clarification on one thing? And that is, so, the funding would have to be, let's just assume we can't put a holding tank into way. Then there would have to be funding to put that holding tank in.
There's thousands and thousands of dollars out here. Sue Penny told me...
I, that wasn't my question. I'm not saying I don't know there's grants. I'm very aware of that. I was asking, we have to get funding for that. Then there has to be a structure put up for the restrooms, right? So, it's not like a quick thing when you just do it in a couple months.
They'll probably be done in two weeks.
If I give you background on when we were doing it, the holding, the holding tank was from James Creek, and he said, he would actually, because one of the complaints where the borough workers didn't have time back then, but the guy in James Creek where we were going to get the holding tank, said, I think it was like $3,500 bucks. He digs the hole, he sets the tank in, and he could do it, I think it was like, he said, in two or three days.
And what does, like, where are you going to use the restroom if there's a holding tank?
Well, then you got to do a concrete pad and a bathroom like Mapleton.
Like, there has to be a building?
Yeah.
And that, you're saying that's all $3,500, or how much does it cost to put that bathroom up and put the holding tank in?
Not that much.
Yo, that's a budget question. But I'm just saying it could be done.
Our borough isn't a good enough answer, because we have financial limitations.
Years and years ago, we're on the flat work on that for a long time down here, like shower, a whole bunch of revenue things. And it was just impossible. We couldn't get it done.
Well, the lady that did the one at Mapleton up there, she said that she can get me the blueprints to do the same thing here.
Mapleton's a different amount. Midland County is different enough.
No, Adam Miller, when he was your borough manager, he did put in a plan like Mapleton's, and that's why it got submitted to the county, which we gave Act 13 funds to build. It was all submitted. It was already approved and ready to be built, but then just no one ever got the money.
Are you talking about from the borough of Mount Union?
Act 13's from the county to the borough of Mount Union.
And you're telling, you're telling me you have documents that show we applied to put a bathroom in?
Yeah, yeah, you applied for Act 13. It's got about $16,000.
I remember that.
And what did we do with the money?
Spent it on dirt, and then gave $6,000 back. Most of it was...
Before my time.
No. It was only a few years ago. And most of it was from the wall, when the wall was being built. Normally, that, for whatever reason, you just paid $250 a load from the dirt to be transported from the wall down to the river. And that's where most of your funds went to. And then other $5,000 or $6,000 was given back.
But we had the engineer, so we followed the engineer and his recommendation.
Well, your borough applied for Act 13 funds to get a bathroom in with cameras for the park. And you just rewarded that. I was on Huntington County Planning Commission and voted on that to award that plan.
If you have the opportunity, Patrick, if you could just email me the documents, that'd be great.
Yeah, and just call Dolores. She has all that stuff, too.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dwight, can you give us the information? We'll keep this posted, one information you give from Mapleton.
Yeah, and our group that we had together down there was got kind of flown apart, because Parks Committee would never have a meeting with us to get this... You cancel the meeting.
Wait a minute, Dwight, I'm going to stop you right there.
Okay, go ahead.
We had to cancel that meeting, because I was directed to cancel that meeting, because we had a DEP complaint, okay? So, don't make it sound like we just canceled it and never had another one.
Have we had one?
No, we haven't. That was just in July. This is August. We just had to do a children's summer camp.
That was in June.
Okay.
Do you want to use one of them on?
Okay.
I can get you that. And there's also grants available on river walks or trails. There's all kinds of grants available for bathrooms. And, you know, it's there.
That is nice.
And this isn't a million-dollar project. I'm sorry. We can put in a bathroom, but we have, you know, why do you want to put water and this and that down there when it's a seasonable thing, you know? And the other thing is, DEP said, I don't see a reason why we can't put porta-johns in for the summer months. And if you rent a park, you have to have a place for them to go anyway. So, the borough is the biggest violator. I'm sorry. When you put that many people there, there's not that many people camping. There's not that many people walking the trail. But when you have a reunion and you rent that place and collect it, them people at the reunion didn't think about that porta-john until they turned around and got there and said, oh, where do I go now?
This city has come here for about 80 years, Dwight, and they pay, and they pay for the unporta-potties families, and been coming for a long time. And the sun, at our parks say, from dusk to dawn.
What's that called, to go in the bathroom?
Like, they're all night, all day. They're not. It's from dusk to dawn. I rented it myself for our granddaughter's graduation.
The point is, is that the administrative rules are different for daily use than they are for overnight use. And you may well be right, like the walk and whatnot. Of course, there are porta-johns everywhere. If DEP says you can do porta-johns overnight, for overnight camping stays, the primitive sites, we have the answer definitively. That's not what we have been told thus far. And even though it seems silly, the differences are there, because if it's just daily use with the park and whatnot, like in the pavilion, okay, the porta-johns are okay. If it's overnight, they're saying, on a long-term basis, they're not. And that's where I'll go back to where we originally started. We have to clarify that with DEP.
Dawn?
I don't understand why, when we were first discussing this, and Cheryl knows, we were talking about three-night stays, okay? If you go to Mapleton, they have pictures or signs of three nights only. We were going to have everybody register at the borough.
That was a conversation and a suggestion. There was no reason...
There was, actually, you guys voted too, to put in...
We did not. Absolutely not. I can show you all the meeting minutes.
Dwight, did they not vote to have camp signs?
I don't think we voted, but we talked about it.
Oh, we talked about it, okay.
We talked about it, but we...
Okay, but still, it's three nights. We never went through and did any of those steps to make the ordinance for a three-night stay, put the post up, put the numbers on, or...
Because we got DEP complaints, and that stopped everything, Dawn. We felt that we had to satisfy their complaints first.
And I would point out ironically, if you do the three-night stays, it makes the restroom issues more pronounced. So, the answer may be different depending on what the length of stays is. But on state regulations, when they approve these primitive sites, they're meant to be an overnight thing. Not that the three days can't work out on the end, and we have to hone in on what we need to do from a sewage perspective to have the three-day limits. That's what we need to do.
And I think that...
And I don't think council's against you. They just need to know some certain answers.
And I think the difference is that Mapleton's is on the other side of the river from where all the people live. It's not right near homes. It's not right along property where there are homes.
But what does that have to do with anything? That primitive camping's been down there for seven years. And now, all of a sudden, it just blew up, like...
It blew up because people were staying there endlessly.
Well, yeah, but if nobody put them in ordinance for them to... The cops don't do anything about it.
We're working on ordinance.
And the other thing is, is that DEP is a complaint-driven organization.
You set up with it.
Someone complained in Mount Union, they didn't complain to me?
I'll let you know.
Oh, yeah, Mapleton, they've been there too. The same lady's been to Mapleton on three or four complaints, so...
The point is, is that, and they've had their issues with people staying too long there, too.
Yep, yep, they got that solved, so, you know.
All right.
That's what we need to do here, is get it solved.
Yeah, but see, we started something, we never finished it. So, the outcome of it is what you're talking about right now, of the people camp. If we'd have finished it, and we'd have posted rules and regulations, we wouldn't be talking about this tonight. But I can't see, and I disagree with going backwards, if the campsites are there. We had campers that stayed under the bridge while we started putting stone down. There was campers that stayed on down the trail where we didn't stone. There was campers that stayed above the bridge. And I'm not talking about the homeless. I'm talking about the people that actually camped there. You know, they had the family and their kids. They went out and put a tent up, and they stayed there a night or two and did whatever. I think that's fantastic if they want to do that. But as a borough, we need to know who it is, and why can't they pay a couple dollars to stay there to use the porta-john that we put there, so that the people walking the trail has a place to go to? I don't, what's wrong with this? I mean, a porta-john isn't a million dollars a night. You know, we could put, two or three of them was our intent, to go up there to the, where you get down in the middle of the trail. We could even do one up by the church. That was our intent.
I have something to say. You're talking about the budget, and where's the extra revenue going to come from?
It was coming from us earning the money.
I heard what you said. I heard what you said. And there wasn't, still needed more stone to go down there, because there wasn't enough stone, correct? I haven't gone down there.
Well, you got to go look, because we got five.
No, I went down and I seen them lay holed up the thing, but I didn't walk the whole trail the whole way around. And they had it set up with a coffee bar, a dining room, the bedroom. And the woman said that, what you call them, told her that it was okay. Nobody gives anybody rights to go down there and stay as a taxpayer, just like you.
Okay. Can you pick this up when we get to the difference?
Yeah, please.
Okay, residency affidavit.
It's in your package. It's part of the borough, it's in the Borough Council handbook as required when you're appointing someone. And so, I sent a draft of one over to Larry, and Larry changed it to what he recommends, and it did happen.
The law requires that you certify by affidavit that you are a resident of whatever municipality that you're going to seek the office, and that you can live there, at least be here. So, we're just confirming what the law says we have to.
And the only thing I wasn't sure about on this, Larry, was the timing of this. When does this get completed by a person wanting to be appointed?
When, before they're sworn in, as part of their swearing-in process.
It's not before we vote and put them in, and then we have to turn around?
Well, it would not, it would kind of make sense to have this before you vote, so you know that they need that requirement.
Yeah.
Right.
We kind of messed that up before.
Okay, is there anything we need to know? Thanks.
Now, is that residency affidavit, is that also require an affidavit if you're elected to Borough Council?
No, it's just an appointee.
You have to be a resident, you have to be an elector. You have to be registered to vote, and that you have to live there. Yes, it does apply if you run for election.
It applies, but I believe the courthouse takes care of it when you do it that way.
Yeah, when you're, if you run for election and then you're sworn in, you turn in, you get your affidavit that you've been sworn in, they make sure that you get the residency affidavit, I believe, in the county. Then it's an election.
So, this is where appoint you.
When we appoint someone, the county is not doing it.
And I thank you for this, because you're the one who found this in the handbook and brought that forward. Thank you, David.
Do we need to do anything?
I think you should approve, but thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion for the matter on the discussion?
I'll make that motion. I'll start with this.
What's your actual motion, Cheryl?
Oh, I'll make the motion that we approve and begin to use the Mount Union Borough affidavit of residencies for all appointees, whether Planning Commission or Borough Council.
Any other questions by council members?
I don't think so.
Any question from public? Can I just vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business? Appointment of subdivision administrator.
Yes, so, we came to realize that in our new subdivision and land development ordinance, there is a section in here that requires you to have someone designated as the subdivision administrator. And that's on page three, for anyone who's interested. And so, during the meeting, the executive session that we held on July 24th, we discussed that. And we would like to appoint someone to the position. And so, we need to take a vote on that. And so, my motion would be that we appoint our zoning officer, Tristan Walker, to the position of subdivision administrator.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Well, a statement to the question. Tristan doesn't want to do it, and she's busy with zoning. And why would we have her do it when we have somebody that's already certified on the payroll to do it?
Had you been at the meeting on the 24th of July, we would have discussed that, I'm sure, but you weren't there to bring that. I did ask Alec to provide me with this alleged certificate, and he never provided it. So, that's great. I'm glad that he has it. Tristan, and this is what we discussed, she is a full-time, Monday through Friday, eight-to-five employee. We don't know when Alec works. He has a full-time day job, is my understanding. So, she's the available person. And she already committed to me and indicated that she does want the position. Um, and she already committed to me and indicated that she's, she does want the position. So you must have spoken with her at a different time. I do understand that she was confronted at the office by someone about it, um, and that she did indicate that she was good with, which either way it went. And the group who spoke at the July twenty-fourth meeting, um, indicated they were in favor of Tristan taking the position based on her being in the community Monday through Friday, eight to five.
If, um, could.
So that's, I didn't, I made a motion. If it doesn't even get a second, there doesn't need to be.
The motion made and seconded, morally seconded it for the record. So now it is open, this discussion, which we've been having, anyone?
Right.
So any additional comments now's the time, folks.
You want to say something, Sharon?
No, I didn't know why she couldn't be a backup. Well, let Alec do it and if he for some reason can't because of his job that she.
I mean, no.
Well, she was there on the twenty-fourth and.
I know, I'm just asking if he can do.
Maybe he can be the backup.
Yeah, maybe he could be the backup. That would be great. If you're a backup.
All right.
You have a motion, you have a second.
A discussion. All right, um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, without a real call, I have a feeling it's one of those votes. I'll, 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 could you record this?
I will.
Joan? Uh, motion, motion is to appoint Tristan to subdivision. Your guess, uh, Marley?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Uh, Sharon?
Can I explain?
No, we'll come back to you. Michael?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Nicole?
No.
No. Alec?
He can't use it. It's a conflict of interest.
Well, actually it isn't because he's not getting personally. But it doesn't matter. He's on here, he's here.
Yeah.
Well, it don't matter.
You said yes?
Yes.
And then she.
Sharon?
Yes. So it looks like it passes six to one with one person leaving the building or the room. We'll note Alec's is an extension, since it involved his name as part of the discussion.
Okay, and if those moving.
And just to clarify for everybody, there is no additional compensation for it. It is, so it's not about paying.
Moving forward, your.
Why don't I take a lap at this one?
Go ahead.
This is, we've had this discussion before and, uh, it has to do with the, the information that, uh, the originating agency identifier. The state, the, the, the state police are saying that if you're going to use the O R I, the originating number for the police department as a borough employee, it has to be categorized as such by ordinance. The, uh, we've had this discussion and back in, late in the year, I was authorized to draft an ordinance which complied with, uh, the state police's mandates on how it would be to take place. You had the choice of keeping your code officer outside the, the, the ambit of the police department or you could move them under, uh, as far as access to records. Council authorized me to go to make the code enforcement officer part of the police department. So what I have done is I drafted an ordinance which basically puts a, a code enforcement officer in the police department as a subdivision, but it would only be for access of information under the clean system, which is the, the, the data system that's maintained by all police departments. Uh, that I drafted this proposed ordinance that would, uh, make, make it clear that the code enforcement officer is not a police officer, has no police duties. Number one. Number two, that the, uh, schedule, the pay, the hours of employment are all controlled by council. So that the police department's sole role would, would be to, uh, coordinate access to information and make sure it's protected under the clean system. So I'm going to pass this out and I would ask everyone to take a look. Uh, it can't be voted on tonight because it's, it would be an ordinance. It would be, you know, have to be advertised and voted on as an ordinance. Uh, we were under, we're getting audited in all this. So, uh, we're trying to get it done and comply with the law as best we can, but it was complicated. So I think I've addressed the, 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 the concerns of those that don't want him to be considered a police officer, to have arrest power. None of that's the case. It's basically protecting data and then council would still maintain its control over employment issues and, uh, what they're going to be doing on their job and how much they're going to be paid. So I'll pass these out and, uh, it'll, it'll be a subject for which you can discuss tonight if you want. It seems to me it would be better to take a look at this and, and decide, so.
You want to pass them this way?
Yeah, whatever you want to do, you take the three.
I do have a couple of questions. And one is, uh, it's my understanding that Alec has not issued a citation because he decided he will not issue citations, even though he's permitted to issue citations. Is that correct, Tim? Um, I didn't get one.
That's an Alec question.
No, it's a question for Alec's supervisor, which is Tim. Does he issue citations or doesn't he? I was under the understanding he will, he refuses to.
Once he issued, then we did have to pay overtime for, to do all of this.
When you say pay overtime, to who?
Officers.
Right, that's to go to hearings. You're talking about the eight cases last year. I'm talking about this year that he's refused to issue citations.
I, I'm, I'm bringing this up with, let this go to personnel.
It doesn't go to personnel. You are his manager. That's what you guys want. He reports to you, right? And Larry just indicated that his hours, his rate of pay, his duties, reports to Borough Council. But we, we have been, I'm under the understanding he has refused to issue citations. And I'm asking you if that's true.
I'd like to refresh my memory, but I think that was also under Sergeant Inge because of we're not up to the, the proper for our, our, our cleaning.
But that's, that's only if a case goes to the magistrate. That's not perishing citations.
In other words, if they, they commit for, that's why it's important. It's, it's almost like our D H P situation. We, we have to have a plan. What we're doing right now is we're out of compliance.
Right now, he's not issuing any citations, so we're not out of compliance. If he did issue a citation, it was very clearly made to me by Larry that, and, and our personal committee, that that would mean an officer would have to go to a hearing if they refused to pay.
No, he could, I think he could go to the, if, 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 if you don't have the O R I, if you don't incorporate it as a department, then the code officer could do the legwork, but the complaint would have to be filed by the police department and then they would have to go to the hearing. If he's made a subdivision, my understanding was is he said, I'm not going to issue citations until we get the ordinance passed because I don't want to set these up for failure where I do it and then the ordinance doesn't pass and then they're left hanging. So I think that was the reason. So the, the, the theory of it is, is that you get, they get limited access. They get no vital police information when they do it as a code department. They get name, they can get address, telephone number, certain data that may help them in doing their, their code work. So if, if they're in that division, the police, the, the officer in charge will monitor and maintain and make sure that the data is protected other than what can be given. Number one. And then number two, that would mean that the code officer could file the citations due to hearing. So you're freeing up the police department not to have to do those things. And that's the theory of it. You're going for, he could issue the citations because the ordinance would make it acceptable under law. And they're tracking that everywhere. People, a lot of code departments have been using the O R I for the police department and they're saying, now, when your next audit, that's not good enough. We've got to make this distinction. So it's not just us. It's just that the state police are making this decision. Well, just a little bit of that. This is what I understand though. If he's not a police officer, he's a liar right now. He's not a police officer. Access to limited data, just exactly what I'm saying. You're giving him the opportunity to get more information. To the name. He would, well, actually he reports to council. If, if our two points were, I'm, I'm lying, so he won't be able to get a lot of. I'm, I'm just saying, depending on what council decides is how the flow of citations will go.
So council approved this, you're saying?
No, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, I'm saying if the next step would be to authorize it for ordinance passage and then once the ordinance is in place, then it would be in place. So if you don't pass the ordinance, he will be a code officer, he will turn those things over to the police department. They'll then have the duty there for.
Which is how it would have happened all these months that he's refused to.
Well, that's how it would have been happening. Had they found the issues that he needed to be addressed. I can't speak for that.
So what is this? What is the purpose of this?
And it's also.
The purpose is.
Playing about police overtime, it's tightening back on that too.
Yes. The purpose is to allow the code officer to access limited information, number one. File citations, number two. Go to hearings, number three. And that effect is you have less overtime of the police department because they're not doing all that stuff. So the reason the ordinance is needed is to give, make sure that all the criminal data about a burglary or, or anything regarding the clean system isn't accessible by the code officer. So you're moving that part of the responsibility to the police department so they can protect the data. In the meantime, the code officer can take pressure off the police department by filing the citations and doing the work that the code officer does. I had put, even put language in that says that this is, that the code officer is not considered to be a police officer, not to have any police power, just to make, to clarify that under law to address legitimate concerns that the council has expressed. I was asked to do it and there was a majority told me to do it. I did the best understanding of needs and what I think the perceived, what the perceived worries are. And all I'm asking, review it.
Of course.
With an open mind, look at it and then come back and make your decision. That's all I'm saying.
Well.
And I, in my opinion, doesn't count. I don't live here. I'm just the lawyer that comes down here.
How do you want to say it's going to take away off of the officers when he works full-time, daytime?
Because they don't have to be the ones that follow.
And if you had an assistant code officer, they fall under the ambit of the O R I. That's the thing is if he's outside the police department, he or she, they have to get their own independent certification to use, to get their own O R I. And then if they leave their job, their O R I goes with them because it's personal. So you want to use the department O R I because then if someone comes in and out and Alec leaves and we get a new code officer, the police department is then still in charge of that O R I, can supervise the control of information. And I'm.
What are the boroughs that use this right here?
I'm not aware of any in our area.
That's what I thought.
But hey, look, I, I, I just, I'll, I'll say this. I'll just, I look, I'll say this.
We're assuming anything for the other community that I got.
Well, I think we're, you could look at it as being a trend center.
Uh, but we are going to trend that.
Hey, look, we're the ones, we're the ones on the audit trail that is coming up. So we're being asked to address.
And if we haven't, and if we haven't issued any citations, there's no problem with you on it. That's all. And if we issued citations, most, most people would pay their citations unless they believe it was an inappropriate citation. And then they would file with the magistrate. And that's when the police officer gets.
That's correct.
And that, then we would make that decision. The officer would make that decision. Is this word pursued?
Why don't we take the time and read this and discuss it later? It is going to be advertised first anyways.
Larry, didn't you go to civil service, maybe?
It's not that. He knew civil service.
Did you hear something say about the school or high?
He said it's acceptable method. He wasn't aware of many communities doing it. And I would just point out the reason that it's going to become, it's going to become more prevalent is because the state police is going to require all the code officers using the O R Is for the police department, they're going to call a hall to. So everyone's going to have to make this decision in the long run. So that would be my first point.
Or their police officers would do that part.
Or their police officers would do that. And there are, you know, there are a lot of communities that don't even have police departments. So they have to get their code officer to get their own O R I. And like I said.
It moves with them.
It moves with them.
Okay, could we do that then? Just. Take a look at.
I've done my part.
Um, financial matters.
Okay, financial matters. This is something that we, we're all, um, on the same page. Um, I went, you know, we've gone through the financial reports and I think there are some important things to make everyone aware of. And that is from a revenue perspective, which is in your reports. Um, we are going to probably end up around seventy-five hundred dollars short of what we budgeted for the, for the cable TV franchise. As you know, a lot of people are ditch, ditching cable at their homes because they're going with streaming services. So our revenues are way down. We will, of course, move the budget down next year in line with that. But this year, we're going to be about seventy-five hundred dollars short if things continue as they have through July. Um, code enforcement citations, there are zeros in there and we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars. Miscellaneous of which, I don't know what it was intended for, was revenue of five thousand dollars. I, I must admit, I don't know what that was for. Timber is at fifteen thousand dollars and we've only brought in less than five hundred. Um, but we, that's a separate issue. Um, I do understand, um, from Aaron and Taylor that, um, the gentleman has walked the properties from TV Wilderness and then he, hi, his mother is in, uh, is in, has been placed in the hospice. And so the next step is for us to have him put a tract of our land out for bid. Is that right, Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm ready for a fall winter sale.
So we can have a fall winter sale. So hopefully we'll be able to bring some funds in from that. Um, expense wise, we've got some challenges with payroll and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Some of the, some of the, the pay, the pay, the wages have not been properly applied to the proper distribution codes in the general ledger. Um, we've already identified one and in the next four payrolls, the monies will be moved to where they belong by, for one of our staff members. There are two others that appear to be, have been distributed incorrectly as, as, um, between the admin, the streets, the water and the sewer. So just so you know, we're working on getting that corrected. Um, the police sick pay was not factored into the budget. We didn't know, I didn't know about it. He, but here's the real problem. Um, and there, this is for full transparency. When they were paid out their sick pay this year, and I cannot speak to prior years because I don't have access to payroll, but have requested the information. They have been paid the full hundred hours at their full rate of pay. The bargaining agreement states it is to be at one quarter their hourly rate. So clearly their pay is not being, our payroll is not being reviewed or monitored by anyone. Larry, how do we get those funds back or are we even permitted to get them back? They were paid out in February.
I would think that we're not getting the back of, they can be corrected for the future.
So I just, I want, I want to make sure we're all on the same page and understand that, um, everyone involved with the police department. Um, and that's forty-five hundred dollars that we paid out that should not have been paid out. Um, health insurance is, goes up every single year. Um, and it is going, we're going to end up about three grand short on the admin side, about seventy-three hundred dollars short on the police side and about, less than a thousand dollars on the street side. So that adds up to about ten thousand dollars that we're going to be short that we budgeted. Uh, overtime is the other category, um, that we did not, did not factor in properly. Um, and there are amounts of about forty-five hundred dollars too much in the streets department, about thirty-four hundred dollars too much in the admin side, in the administrative side. Um, regular wages custodian is going to be over about, about a thousand and duties about eleven hundred, it appears. That's another nine thousand dollars. I don't bring that up. I bring that all up to say we have to tighten our belts. Um, and we have to watch what we're spending and that's why it's really important that we, that we review these financial reports. In general, um, as it stands right now, we need to have someone trained to be a backup on payroll. We have no one backing up payroll. We have no one auditing or reviewing payroll other than the finance committee. And we're only doing it when we have meetings. And we don't meet every month and we, there's a payroll every two weeks. Um, I believe we're now getting signatures on the final timesheet that it was needed on. There was no year-end closing done for our payroll for two thousand twenty-four. And prior users were still sitting as active in our payroll system. So these are the kind of things that we have to put our, our fingers on and get corrected. And I just thought it was important that all the, a whole of Borough Council know, um, we want to be transparent in every way possible.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
D C E D S T F A base.
Okay, that's, I got an email, an outreach from Terry Kumpel with, uh, D C E D. And she was asking if she could meet with a few of us to talk about the current stamp process that we're in the middle of. The stamp process, if you remember, is the Pennsylvania Economy League came in here and it was right during COVID and they did a study of our borough and they made a whole list of recommendations, a lengthy list of recommendations. Um, one of those recommendations was, um, that we develop a comprehensive plan. And we did so. And that was the state, that was phase two of the stamp. We, uh, had a committee of ten people and we then, and went through a lengthy process with the public input as well. And that got adopted just a few months ago. I think it was April, if I'm not mistaken. There is still, the last opportunity in this cycle of D C D is to, um, we can make an ask of up to two hundred thousand dollars if we are willing. It's up to two hundred thousand. That's the max. Doesn't mean we have to ask for two hundred thousand. And whatever ask we make, um, we would get funded at ninety percent by them, the state, D E C D, D C E D. And we would fund the other ten percent. Um, we had a meeting with her, just a few of us. It was Sharon, it was Joan, it was Jenny Spriggs from the Comprehensive Plan Committee and it was George Dropk from the, um, Planning Commission. Um, we know we can't have too many Borough Council members in a meeting or we would violate the Sunshine Act. So we were sure we didn't do that. Um, she indicated to us, she being Terry Kumpel, in looking through the P E L recommendations, which she went through, as you'll remember, item by item, and there must have been twelve of them. Her very strong recommendation to us is that we hire a borough manager, that we are lacking leadership in our borough. And that's why the things that I just reviewed with you get missed. And that's why we don't. Anyway, I'm not, I'm not going to go into what I've already gone over. Our deadline, uh, if we want to make such a request would be mid-September for the second round. We already missed the first round of a request. It would be mid-December for a third round. All of that has to be done and approved by D C E D by April. Um, and we, we can only use the funds toward things that are in the P E L recommendation list. We can't just come up with other projects, is my point. Um, we've discussed many times that a borough manager would be funded at seventy-five percent the first year, fifty percent the second year and twenty-five percent the third year. She said that they just went through the process in Clearfield and hired a borough manager for seventy thousand dollars a year and they have two thousand more residents than we do. Um, so it's almost double what we have because I think we're down to less than twenty-four hundred residents at this point. Um, she did meet, uh, with me and went over a financial review of our finances, of the report they get from the auditors, which we haven't gotten our report yet, but she said it's something they have to turn in. Um, she, they would assist with advertising for a borough manager. They would assist with interviewing. And they would be key in selecting the person to be recommended to this community and to this Borough Council. She said you need someone who has experience. You need someone who has experience in government and nonprofit experience is really important. She said she would work with the borough manager once they were hired. She does advise against, if we were to do this, she advises against requesting or requiring them to be a borough resident. She said you are going to dramatically limit your ability to get someone qualified. She said at least extend it to Huntington County, Midland County, maybe even Fulton County, the surrounding counties that we have around us. Um, and she said this would be a three-year. And she said this would be a three-year thing, but you can only sign a contract with a manager for a maximum of two years. She wanted us to understand that. She said if there were sufficient funds, that you could also use the remaining funds to have them assist with developing policy and procedure manual for our borough, of which we have none. And that is problematic for any organization. So I'm not asking for a vote tonight, I'm simply asking for borough council to please give great thought to this. Because I think it's important for our future. And talk with your constituents to see how they feel. I'm done.
Okay. Committee report? Parks.
Okay, Parks and Rec. Real quick, we had a really good children's program for a couple of weeks and everything went really well. We are going to plan to do a follow-up meeting. We had eight presenters from different organizations for the children. We sent thank you letters to those presenters. It was the Bricktown Museum, the Mount Union Police Department, the Mount Union Fire Department, Mifflin County Savings Bank, the Bureau of Forestry, they had Smokey the Bear there. Shavers, no, they didn't show up. Pennsylvania Game Commission, nope, bad, they didn't show up. Shavers Creek Environmental Center, Community State Bank, Juniata College of Science and Motion Program, as well as the Mount Union Community Library, and they had Haiku the Therapy Dog there. And then Marley and Friends prepared and had a picnic on the last day and they brought the food.
Well, it was someone who has their own business, thanks to Chronic Creations, that's who did the meal.
It was wonderful. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you very much.
And thank them. And we will be scheduling, truly, we will be scheduling a Parks and Rec meeting. We were going to try to schedule it for this week and then we learned that Taylor was on vacation. It would be really helpful for borough council to know when our borough secretary is going to be off. Not sick, but when she's going to be off on vacation. I didn't know. I don't, I don't know. Did she text the rest of you or email or?
Did you guys know?
Anyway.
And if I got email that Taylor was going on vacation.
It was a recognition request.
It's put on the board, sitting behind her desk, and we all have to put our vacation on there. It's all on there, every single person.
But what if you don't go away and walk to the Zeeport?
Well, I mean, that's, I can't speak to that.
It's a request for me, but thank you.
There is a board there that has two kind of jobs.
Thank you for pointing that out. It would be helpful to know. But neither here nor there, we, we're going to try to do it this week. She's on vacation and that's no problem. She gets to take her vacation. There's no complaint about that. So I will, who is it in your group that would like to know when we're rescheduling it? Is there anyone in particular you want me to reach out to?
Reach out to Dawn.
Reach out to Dawn. Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else for Parks and Rec.
Well, we have made a report from Erin right here and everything that they're doing. What I have is, you know, trying to give, well, when, when I permit to put it that way, to do more of the curbs and everything, and they're doing that. They're doing a fantastic job at that also. But all this other stuff has to come first.
Did you have a street meeting?
Not per se this month or last month. But we did go over a few things, like the month before, I believe it was, I think, and pretty much what you said. I mean, when they have time, they will get to the curbs.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Sure. Where, the curbs are done for the year because we used old paint that he doesn't allow us to get, so. What's done this year is what's going to be done for this year.
Do you have any red left?
Yeah, there's, there's, I think there's seven, five or seven gallons in there, something like that.
Would they do the curb crush from the high rise?
Yeah, it's going to have to be stripped off and etched because it's new concrete.
Is that why it didn't, is that why it didn't stay?
Yeah, it's new concrete. You can see where the, it's stuck to the old curbing, but the new curbing, when they put new curbing in.
I wondered why they did that.
Okay.
All around the schools are done right now, right?
I'm sorry?
Around the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Even up to what, market streets?
Yeah, on the, on the main Jefferson Division.
Yeah, main drive.
We did, we started down the bridge and we worked our way up to, towards the underpasses and that's kind of where we, we, we kind of ran, we actually ran out of paint there by Joan's house, back, back in that area.
Finance?
Yeah, I think.
Buildings, alleys, theater. Personnel, Mike?
We just had a meeting last week and it was to discuss, actually, these actions in the meeting and we had the executive session report.
And you?
Oh, we had a personnel meeting last Thursday and it was just to deal with the exec, what we discussed in the executive session and then took action on when we get back out.
Ordnance, Marley?
Oh, I am, I spoke with someone that is willing to help with, help me with the ordinance. I've got to get them some paperwork and stuff, but they're willing to help me. Oh, for, the park, the, and I'm going to the council.
Public safety?
Okay, we just have a sign issue that I don't even know if it's going to be our issue because it might be private property at the Y store, so I'm just going to get with Erin about it first.
Anything from tree and forestry?
I think I already mentioned we're hoping to get a meeting, a kind of waiting for Mr. Pauline to be there.
Cemetery?
Is there anyone else on these committees?
Yeah, I'm on there.
Haley and Jeanette. Contacted me. I said I'm with the committee, but he never contacted me.
Well, we didn't have a meeting yet, but one of the things I'd like to see done at the cemetery is they have on their sign that you can't have the solar lights. I don't think that that's right. I think they should be able to put up a solar light if they want to. Every other cemetery has them. They're, they're all lit up at night. You can see them. I don't understand why we aren't allowing, why the signs that you can't. So.
Sharon, what committee did you say before cemetery? Because I don't have that one. You guys want to add it?
Tree and forestry. It's an ad hoc committee, short, long, big, short term.
Okay, now, planning commission report.
Okay, I'm going to be brief. You can read what's in your report relative to the comprehensive plan. The committees met, all six high priority items were discussed and those are in your comprehensive plan document. And we have decided to meet once every two months instead of every month because there's lots of meetings going on. Our next meeting is September twenty-third. Borough logo, we talked about moving it back to borough council. The borough website maintenance, we're moving that back to borough council. Zoning ordinance, low-density side setbacks, we haven't received anything, so we don't know what to do. So I think it needs to go back to borough council as well, since we haven't gotten anything.
It has, it's on my desk. I inspected, it's on my, one of my computer screens. I'm making the changes in the residential district. So I should have that out to the committee and council for review.
Okay, because that other had to come to the planning commission.
Correct it.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Set to all of you and then you, we have to have a formal public hearing with the planning commission.
Okay. Also, the two-hundred-and-fifty-teen U.S.A. Teen Celebration, we're putting that back to borough council. We really think that needs to be something that takes place with the residents and all of, the whole borough council. PSAB teen program discussion. We've learned through one of our members that there is a program through the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, and I can't remember what TBA stands for, but it is where you can get employment law advice. You sign up for this program and you can get employment law advice through employment law attorneys when you need them, as you need them. And you pay some set fee and you get so many contacts with them per month or per year. They can also be beneficial should you develop an employee handbook, and I know the personnel committee was talking about doing that. So maybe at our next meeting, we can get more details. We did discuss the, just sort of an outline of it at our planning commission meeting. There is, we did receive a subdivision application from Anthony J. Elisi and based on everything that occurred with it, we didn't get it. It went to the, it went to Huntington County from the surveyor. Huntington County wrote up their recommendations and that's the only reason we became aware that this gentleman filed for a subdivision. And so then we started making phone calls and finding out that the surveyor wasn't aware that we had a saldo. So we got in touch with him and let him know that we do have a saldo. And so Mr. Elisi, and all we had was the document from, from the Huntington County making the recommendation. We didn't have anything else. So that surveyor then had an envelope brought in some days later of the application, as well as the accompanying documents, the map and so forth. Then, a number of days later, they brought in a fee to pay for it. So based on that, I sat down with Tristan and Taylor and we went through the subdivision and land development ordinance and the section that talks about processing it. And so we begun the process and the planning commission will review Mr. Elisi's request at our next planning commission meeting, which is the third one to do every month. So that's where that stands as of right now. I'm done.
Okay. I didn't get a fire EMS report, a maintenance report, we, that was. We wasted that. Do you have anything to add, Erin?
No, I don't.
He said no.
Yeah, no.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe you couldn't hear him.
I just handed a wire past if I would state promote this at the borough council meeting. If I had somebody to argue for it. Do you want me to do that during public comment or no?
Public comment. Okay, solicitors report.
I have nothing to add.
Sheriff's secretary here. Mayor report.
Anything else, we participated in the Pittsburgh night out in Hinton and we had a fight up there. It went very well. A lot of kids.
And that's something we would consider having here someday.
We did about ten, fifteen years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
If you can. Oh, okay.
But that is something that we could think about. We had five departments.
It's national, you know.
Exactly.
Could be here.
Why not? Yeah.
Okay, fourth minute, your visitor requesting to speak. David Kelly?
I'll say I haven't got first. I'm still, wheels are still spinning in my head right now. Give me a second, so.
Wayne?
Yeah, I've written down what I want to say. I didn't want to say something I'm too sorry for. In a previous council meeting, my question was Nicole, a sheriff's deputy, had a key to the nation's police station. And I have nothing against Nicole. I have nothing to do with who she is. If it were my grandmother and she was a sheriff's deputy, I would say she had no business having a key to our police station. In another council meeting, I asked why the office will open provision from eight-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m. Union contracts state that the office hours would be from eight a.m. until five. I got no answer from the council that was satisfactory. Council's responsibility is to enforce agreements and procedures that were agreed upon. What good is council to the taxpayers if they cannot, cannot enforce a union contract? And I'd like a satisfactory answer to these two issues, but I, something else I wanted to go on before I hit them and ask for an answer. These two issues may seem trivial to some, but it's a proven fact that small issues, when they're ignored, they lead to bigger issues. But it's a fact that a lot of little kids figure this stuff out. In that meeting, there is practically no accountability and employees come and go as it claims, and that's a fact. And I can point to specific instances, but I don't want to name names. What the employees of this borough do or don't do is a reflection of their leader, which in this case is the borough council. The borough council is the laughing stock of this town and we are. It's embarrassing. I hate to say that. It's hard to say. It's true. You can't, if you don't know what the truth is, you can't deal with it. In Pennsylvania, there are instances where the state government can intervene if a borough cannot manage its affairs. I believe this borough has reached that point and need to solicit the government-powered boroughs to intervene. Now, getting back to the two questions. About Nicole having a key to the police station. And I don't know why council doesn't want to deal with that. Like I said, it has nothing to do with Nicole. I have nothing against her. Politics is a dirty business. That's just the nature of it. So I'd like an answer to that in person, if I could.
Who do you want to have the key?
Pardon me?
Who do you want to have the key?
I'd, well, I'd say that somebody in the office could go there and let people in between the police station.
I don't understand why it's such a big deal. I mean, has something been missing or something wrong?
Does our, does our officer of charge have a key to the sheriff's office? You win there when you want. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Well, she doesn't have access to all their things.
Why does it matter?
Why not? Why doesn't it matter? It's just a building. A borough-owned building. If there's no police, things out.
I think that my thoughts would be, just like every other borough facility that we have, Erin has a bunch of keys to whatever facilities he's responsible for. Taylor has keys to what she's responsible for. The mayor has a key to what he's responsible for. Our, it's, it's our employees that have those. It's, it's not non-employees who hold the keys to our properties, is, I think, the point.
But how do you know? But I mean, there hasn't, there hasn't been a list of who has what keys.
I thought that that was something that our borough secretary was working on.
Well, they're working on, they're working on it, but we don't have it as of now, because we don't know who has keys. We all know.
But that's not his question. We don't, you're correct. We don't know, we don't know. But his question is specifically about someone having a key to our police station other than our borough secretary slash borough manager.
I don't, I mean, I.
I assume the mayor has a key there. You have a mayor, you have a key, right? Because there should be no reason that Taylor or couldn't walk over and let the pest guy in just like anyone else. At least, I don't know why.
She, she couldn't, she couldn't because she's had them bad.
So couldn't we then schedule the pest guy to come on the days where our day shift police officers are working?
We've, we've only recently had that.
That's right. It's, that's correct.
I work day, I work day like so.
So maybe it's something we could coordinate.
We have the same bug guy that the housing uses. So they are not from close heat, like they're at least an hour drive away. So it's in their schedule. They hit whenever they hit the other buildings, when they're in the area.
So hopefully, they can coordinate that with the two police officers who work the day shift. That's the, I don't have a better answer for you. That would be my best suggestion as a council member.
Okay, anything else?
The other question had to do with the office hours. I can't believe this still exists.
I, I was told that they, they may lock the door four-thirty, but they're doing their.
That's bull crap.
Well, I don't, I'm just telling you what I was.
I wasn't born yesterday.
Okay, so that, that's, that's, I think, an interpretation under the bargaining. My, my, I mean, you can have your own opinion about it. My understanding is that it's the non-uniform bargaining agreement. My, my, I mean, you can have your own opinion about it. My understanding is that the non-uniform bargaining agreement stated that the staff at the office work from eight to five, or they can, or, or if it was, they were so interested in Borough Council agreed to it, it would be seven-thirty to four-thirty, or it could be seven to four, or whatever, but it's eight to five. My understanding, the last time this question was asked, which was from Taylor, our borough, borough secretary, was that the reason that they closed the door at four-thirty is because there always have to be two staff members there. That's the minimum for safety reasons, is my understanding. And that they manage and process by two people, the cash that is paid there during the day. That was my understanding of why it gets closed at four-thirty and they need the five. I don't, I don't, I can't answer for the morning, other than, you know, the computers get turned on and I can't speak to that. Is it a question for Taylor? Not for, I mean, unless borough, other Borough Council members have.
That's what I was told.
Okay, now maintenance workers are seven to three-thirty. Do they get a half hour to get ready in the morning and then a half hour to ready to quit?
That's a question for Aaron.
Well, they can't, they don't.
Well, do you wanna ask him?
Who ever heard of such an interpretation?
Do you wanna ask him?
No.
Why don't you wanna ask him?
I know you do contracts. I'm negotiating them.
So they don't need that kind of crap.
You need to do the office either. You're not talking more about there. We're only hiring them two boroughs. Curry, you don't, council don't give you a job.
I mean, I've answered the best my.
Well, it's not a good answer.
Um, Dwight?
The only thing I got to say other, other than, what we talked about earlier was the, uh, the benches, uh, I guess does the Borough Council see fit to sell the benches like we originally started to? With the memorial plaque on the back and people can buy them and we can put them where they would like to have them. You know, DEP asked me not to, not to turn them sideways where the water hits them. Turn them with the water, so, you know, it runs past, uh, do we get council's permission?
The only question that I, uh, the only request I would have for our legal records would be that we get a copy of the DEP saying that we are permitted to do that because it's in a flood plain. That gives my own, my, but that's the attorney who can speak better to that.
Well, I can, she said not a problem. If, if I needed paperwork to get this, uh, you know.
She just sent it in an email and forwarded the email to us at the.
That's not a problem. She said she'd send me whatever I wanted.
There's already benches down there. There's already benches down.
There aren't benches down in the bottom part, the flood plain portion that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I, I can put them in the flood plain. She said I could put them.
Yeah, there's a big one right on the, where you go on the second part of the trail. There's a couple off right below the park.
Yeah, Jeremy Kraus put like ten or so down there.
If it, if it's just as easy that Dwight send the emails, that okay with you, Ron?
What?
That Dwight just send the email, then we'll have it in our records, that we have approval that.
Oh, I don't care.
Dwight's right. They have to run, like, the rivers cross like this. They have to be that way, cause then the theory is the water runs by the benches and they don't send it into the water and then cause buildup downstream.
Are they, are they gonna be fastened down that way, or are they gonna be movable benches?
We're up for concrete to put them in.
How are you?
And, uh, she said that, you know, her, her thing was, Felicia said that as nice as the trail was, that she felt sure that I knew how to put a fork bench in, so we didn't need no permits to do it. That was her words. So I'll be more than glad to get you an email stating.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody have anything to add?
I have one more thing. This is not a threat. If I got no response, reasonable response to my two questions, I'm gonna write a letter to the editor and I'm gonna use names, which I can do legally if you're elected official. Ask Larry, he'll tell you that.
The answer is number one, the majority of council doesn't agree with your assessment that Nicole can't have a key. She's on the, the public safety.
She hasn't voted on that.
Yeah, she's had, well, I, but I think, I think the, I don't hear people saying that they agree to change it. Like, you can discuss that.
We didn't even know about it until a number of months ago, when it was brought up by him, but we haven't voted on that, Larry.
I, that, you haven't voted on that, so I stand corrected. But I don't see that there's a groundswell. Well, then, why don't we put that on the agenda for next month for voting? So, if someone can inform Taylor of that. So your issue will be vote on the key next month. The second issue is, is that the union contract says they work, they are working till five. The public just isn't allowed into the building. So, uh, the interpretation is, is that they're, we're complying with the union contract and they're working sufficient hours. It's just that the public is not allowed in the last half hour, so they can balance their books.
And the first half hour.
And the first half hour.
Larry, you have a different opinion. Have you seen this half, another place where they get half hour to get ready and a half hour to start, half hour.
I, I can't speak to every community. I'm not aware specifically of any that do it, but it, it doesn't inherently bring to me to be stupid or silly, like you have your computers to turn up. You have to open your ledgers and your journals. And at the end of the day, you're balancing your books and it's easier to do that and not make mistakes when people aren't coming in to ask legitimate questions. And the question is, does our community feel the loss of that hour, half hour in each end? I, I, I don't know that that's the case, that the community's needs are being served, so we're getting the time that we're paying for our employees. They're just doing other things. That's, that's, that's what I read from council. Am I missing something, council? And do you wanna vote on that again? So he has his answer. So they'll both be on the agenda for that? He's asked and I think council needs to speak. We're gonna speak to, don't vote on both issues next month.
Well, you know, the borough gets time clock and then they can look, the time clock can show where, where everybody is at. What, what employee is going, where.
So that's a big.
You know, I know people are willing to raise money to, to buy. In Huntington, the borough manager works, everybody's at Borough Council all the time. There's no accountability. People come and go as they please. I never heard of such an organization like this.
I have two things. I first want to, um, compliment Borough Council for passing the residency activated. Um, I think that's a, a step in the right direction and I compliment you guys for making positive changes. Also, I was asked to publicize that there is a concert.
Quiet.
Um, having Craig Morgan, um, and also Chris Woodward and Julian Smith. It is at six PM on August eighth. It costs sixty dollars in advance, but you get a front row seat, you get two beers, you get to listen to Greg Merg-Morgan, who I guess is a very, um, reputable, um, prominent musician. And it benefits the Magnum Park Park. So, and I believe it also includes food. There is also a poster on the exit door going out. You can look at it and I'm willing to pass this one around if you would like. See or take a picture of it.
So what's it on date?
It's on August eighth at six PM. Is that, is that the? Airport in Adamport. Adamport Airport.
Is there anybody else that needs to speak?
Yeah.
Uh, as you know, that dumpster's gone out. I think that's that Liverman suit, but the only other thing is, uh, groundhog. They were in that wall and the back of those houses there. Somebody, somebody killed six of them already. Groundhog. Well, I, yo, the other thing is, why, why was Monty Borough Police at the, the fire convention? Weren't you guys in a parade?
Where, where's that?
When they had that fire convention.
But that's the fire department, they come and.
But I, somebody sent me a video. I couldn't download it.
You mean, you mean Huntington County parade? Yeah, yeah, we, we got invited to that, same way as the, the sheriff's department there. We, we worked with the fire department. We worked hand in hand with them. It was PR.
Okay, I, I couldn't see that YouTube, somebody sent me, cause it was, you know. What we need is, uh, I live on West Worth Street, down past Jesus. We need to be let the sign. We also need, uh, children that play, cause there's a lot of kids along that street there, that, that, that play.
He's writing them down.
Right there at that corner of Washington Street and Water Street, going to school here, there is a bus dropped off kids there. Is there any way, maybe put a, like a sign up saying bus stop or something?
Oh, why? They stop off throughout, not really. We'd have to put them, I mean, presumably.
I'm just saying, cause once that Jesus get, you know, vans down, you know, it's gonna be causing problems.
Can I help, like, tables stop for the flash and where.
Well, they, they, they do, but maybe put a sign somewhere where, hey, you know, slow down, bus stop. Cause there's a lot, like, a lot of kids get out there. And there's always kids along the road there that play also, I mean.
I hear your concern, cause it, it's throughout the borough of the city and, and they, they put those monitor things up, whatever you call those, that it tracks the speed and I think it helps, but you can't leave those up forever.
Isn't saying leave Chestnut State or there, there's no crosswalk. I've been trying to get one there because.
Well, speaking of Chestnut Street, West Chestnut Street?
Well, I'm not.
Yeah, well, you said about making Water Street one way, cause of the traffic and parking. You go along West Chestnut Street there, you see all this, there's parking on both sides. You can't get, you know.
Wait, people know to let one person go and, you know. A copy courtesy.
Some people do, but you know, but it just bubbles up there, in there, but.
Well, he's on the street, he's charging streets, so he's, he has all his stuff written down.
And, you know, there is, there is a lot of speeding on that street, like I say, going machines to the stop sign. I don't worry to go in a hurry, cause, you know, they come around Washington Street, they get down Water Street in a hurry, just get to the stop sign, or they go pick up their two month though, they Jesus or something, something, you know.
Okay. We'll address those at the next meeting.
Yeah, that, from what, no, I think that guy goes to get that Liverman suit, owns that property.
Okay, let us know next month. If you're still there. Anybody else have anything?